We have called the order the October 25th meeting of the Haslett School Board. We'll start with correspondence.
Thanks, Mike. We have a nice thank you note from Christie and Todd T. Kelly. Todd is our food service director thanking us for a beautiful flower arrangement on the birth of their baby boy, Jack.
Great.
That's it?
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, great. It's at this point in the meeting that we ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address any issue that's not on our agenda tonight. Step forward to the mic, please, and if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Leonard Proventure. I reside at 5824 Buena. It's been, I think, a little over a year since I've been here before the board. At that time, I brought up an issue when Mr. Reagan was still superintendent, and I want to report since that time. I've I had the interaction with Mr. Reagan back on the day of the last school millage, back last spring. I got to thank him at that time, but unfortunately haven't been able to attend the board meeting and presented this to you, that since my communication a year ago with respect to lighting the flags and stuff, that that has been excellent at Murphy School on two occasions. I noticed that the light has gone out in within a day, and on one occasion, when I noticed it out on a Friday night, by Monday evening, it had been repaired, and that's excellent. I think I don't know if it's a combination of things, whether it's the lighting system and the personnel, but it's just just been excellent, and I greatly appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to bring an issue to the board. It deals with the upcoming election, and I believe it to be nonpartisan in nature, and it's a local issue, and I haven't seen any of the candidates for any of the elective offices being in opposition to this. There are numerous ones that are in support. And that deals with renewal of the millage for both the pedestrian bike pathway and our park system. I think these two items on the millage are valuable resources, just as valuable as our school systems, and are integral part of our community and what makes our community. And I think it's very inexpensive. It basically, the Bike Path Millage works out to $2.33 per month, per household, on a $200,000 home within our community, which is cheaper than any fancy cup of coffee you get in the township, cheaper than any fast food meal, and is less than the returnable value of a can, 10 cents a day. And all I'm asking is for the board as individuals, if they can support that, if it's permissible under your policies to communicate this to other related organizations that you interact with, the parents' teachers' organizations, either through phone trees, email, whatever, I would greatly appreciate that. And likewise with our parks. Observations I have made in the past is that students from Meridian High, I guess they have some component of 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 their education is community service. I have observed them in Hillbrook Park, which is the nearest neighborhood park to mine, where I live, and there's an undeveloped side, and they were going through on a Saturday. And from what I observed, a good, probably the better part of the Saturday, cleaning up that park of litter, making the the undeveloped trails accessible and walkable by people. I greatly appreciate that. I don't know if that's a component of the other, you know, high school level, but I think it's a worthwhile thing. And I think it develops civic pride, civic responsibility, and I don't have to talk to you individuals about civic responsibility because you have been here, and I would like to thank you once again for being here for our community and doing such a fine job, especially with respect to the fiscal responsibility that you have exhibited in managing our school system so well. And with everything going on in the world as it is today, I believe more firmly each day that to prepare people for the world, that education is the basis and the continuing basis for people being able to live together and harbor in this world. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mike. Just a reminder to the community and the Board of Education, the Foundation Inspiration Awards Night will be held on November 16th at Hawk Hollow. And again, our three recipients this year are Bob Reagan, former superintendent of schools at Haslett, Matt Borland, a 1989 alumni, and Gil White, president of White Hills Development Corporation. If you're interested in tickets, registration forms can be found in all of our school buildings as well as the administration building. Also, the high school musical Fiddler on the Roof will be performed on November 18th, 19th, and 20th at our Haslett Performing Arts Center. All performances are at 7:30 PM, and the tickets and our ticket forms are available at the high school office. So I encourage everybody to take take that show in. It'll be a great performance.
Mike, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
In addition to that, I talked to a friend who was one of the people helping out with the tickets, and they are going very fast. So if you want to go, you need to do something quick.
And they always do. It's an excellent performance. Eric Longman and his crew deserve a great deal of credit. And then lastly, congratulations to the staff at Meridian High School as well as Greg Shook for being awarded North Central accreditation. And this is for the second year in a row. And Meridian High School was awarded this accreditation without warning this year, and we'd like to commend the staff for all of their efforts. This is a result of a lot of hard work and really is a great way to be involved with the school improvement process, and it's just a fine, fine thing for Meridian High School. So, and that concludes my report for the season.
Thanks, Mike. We have just one discussion item tonight, and that's our 2003-4 district audit report. And Bruce Dunn for Main Urban Studies and Analysis is here tonight to go over that report.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ben. I'm glad I wasn't late. I'm going to go over some of the highlights tonight on a few of the issues, and if there's any questions that you've got, feel free to ask as we go along. Before I get into the report, I do want you to know, we had a lengthy meeting all week or so ago with the finance committee, and it was a it was a good meeting. There's been a little transition in superintendent's position, the director of finance position, and it was a nice opportunity to kind of get together with them and the finance committee and kind of go through a lot of the things in the report from that standpoint. This is the second year under what I'll call the new reporting format, and a few years from now, it'll become the older reporting format. But first time you'll have some comparative numbers with the new method. Last year, we changed quite a few things around, and I'll go over a few of those items as well, and I'll refresh you. If you can go to page Roman numeral page one of the report, that's our opinion. It's unqualified opinion, meaning the financial statements present airly. And the report behind on page Roman numerals six is titled Management's Discussion and Analysis. And in the lower right-hand corner under figure A1, it's kind of a nice spreadsheet to explain how the audit report is put together. On the left, you'll see there's a box for the management discussion analysis. That's written by your staff here. This is really a synopsis of what happened and how it happened and why it happened. The basic financial statements are really about four or five pages, and I'll go over those in a few minutes. Required supplementary information, that is your budget to actual variance. I think that's on page 24 or 25 with your general fund. And then we have the footnotes and additional information. That kind of helps. Yeah, the RSI, required supplementary information is on page 24. And then the financial statements are broken down to the district-wide and the fund financial statements. And district-wide is the full accrual for-profit, similar to a for-profit entity. We have the fixed assets on, we take depreciation, we book all the receivables, we book all the payables, just like you would be doing in a for-profit. The fund financial statements are really what I'd call the more traditional method of accounting, and that's what you budget primarily in your general fund. Where we have your general fund, that's the main operating fund of the district, you have your school lunch fund, you have debt funds, you have capital projects funds and things of that nature. So that will take you through the management discussion analysis. If you go to page one, on regular page one, statement of net assets, governmental activities, district-wide statements. The district has $69 million of assets, $20 million our current assets, of which $16 million is investments. Before you get real excited about that, we also have a commitment for most of that money, and most of that money's been committed to finishing up your capital projects fund. Receivables, the state of Michigan owes you $3.6 million. That hasn't changed. The state still wants you to spend the money first, and then two months after the school year is over, they'll kind of settle up with you. That hasn't changed. And then we have your capital assets, your brick, mortar, property, equipment, less accumulated depreciation of about $14 million, leaving $48 million after depreciation. And prior prior to the district-wide statements going to new format, those assets really were never recorded netted depreciation. On the liability side, we've got $3 million. That's higher than it normally would be. And when we get to the fund statements, you'll see that. That's primarily due to some construction projects going on. Accrued salaries and related items, $2.1 million. That's primarily your employees that have earned their contracts but have elected to be paid over 26 pays after the end of school year and their related fringe benefits. We have a note payable of $1,009,000, and that means that due to that issue we talked about earlier where the state doesn't pay you currently, you have to borrow during the year to meet payroll and other obligations. And then we have obligations, long-term of a little over $69 million, and and that's a result of where you are facility-wise realistically. If you look around, you've had a lot of new facilities going on. As we're currently doing this year's audit and next year's audit, you're in the process of doing additional upgrades. And when we get to your net assets or deficit, so to speak, you have in your fixed asset area, you have $13 million deficit, and that's something you've had in the past, starting last year. And that's a result of you're in the school bond loan fund, and and that's districts that are into the school bond loan fund typically will have a deficit similar to yours. It doesn't affect your cash flow. Really, what you're doing with the school bond loan fund to the taxpayers is you've said to the community, we're going to have a level tax rate. And that means early on, we're going to have to borrow a little bit more, and then once that debt gets paid off, then we'll start paying off the debt, and the trade-off is is a level tax tax levy for your debt. Page two is your district-wide statements of net assets, full accrual, everything. And what this shows you is a couple of things. First off, that you have expenditures expensive, just under $29 million. We have some charges for services, school lunch, community ed programs, athletics, things of that nature, and then we have some federal and state grants. And as you can see, the charges for services and the federal grants are about $3 million, leaving you a deficit of $26 million. And in Michigan, if you looked at a school district audit report, that would be typical because how do we fund our schools primarily? It's funded primarily through somewhat on property taxes and primarily through the foundation allowance, and that's $18.5 million, along with some revenues that you get from the intermediate school districts. So we we chipped away at the deficit at the beginning of the year. We had $12.5 million deficit. On the full accrual method, we were able to reduce that by $1.5 million. Now, if I can have you go to page three, this is a little more traditional report. We have a couple of major funds. The general fund is always considered a major fund, and it should be. I mean, it's your primary operating fund. We have a debt service fund that's been classified as a major fund and in your capital projects activity. And as you can see in the capital projects fund under investments, you had over $12 million that are being invested to finish up your capital projects fund. We have payables in the capital projects fund of $2.5 million, and we have a remaining balance to be spent of $9,798,000. In the general fund, we have total fund balances of about $2.5 million, of which $1.9 million is undesignedated. That's about 7.9% of your general fund expenditures. And then in the lower right-hand corner, we do a reconciliation of your all of your fund balances, $13.3 million. And then we convert to district-wide statements where we add the assets and add all the liabilities. And there's where you can see your assets are 48 million, your long-term liabilities are 71, and that's what creates that deficit of a little over $11 million. Page four is your statement of revenues and expenditures. We did have some significant items going on here. Again, your general fund, roughly $24.8 million of revenue, $23.8 million worth of expenditures after outgoing transfers. We were able to add $590,000 to the general fund fund balance. In your debt service 2003 school bond loan fund account, you had a major undertaking going on this year. You had proceeds from your debt of a little over $17 million. And in and in exchange, what the state of Michigan said is they wanted you to pay off that school bond loan balance outstanding. So you took out new debt, paid off your old debt. It was a refinancing, and you picked up some savings to the district as a result of that as well. The other item that you had significant activity going on this year is you had over $13 million of expenditures in your capital projects fund. At the beginning of the year, we had $22 million available, and you have $9.7 million left, and that will carry on through the activity. Keep in mind, when we do your annual audit for capital projects fund, in addition to doing an audit to express an opinion, the capital projects fund, we do a compliance audit each and every year. So at the end of that project, there'll be a report that needs to be filed with the state of Michigan. And there, we're looking primarily at two things. We pull out your ballot language and say, what did you tell the voters you were going to do with that money? And we say, are you doing that? And yes, they are. The second question is, within those rules of bond expenditures, there's some things you can spend money on, and there's some things you can't spend money on. So that's the second test that we're looking at. So we spend a fair amount of time looking at a little over $13 million, and that's one of those things, when you have it, you have to do it, and then when the construction project is over, that'll be that'll be an audit procedure that isn't required. So we have no findings there, and that's an important element. Page five, we reconcile these two methods of accounting. On page four, we had a overall, all funds combined, we had a reduction of fund balances of $11 million. Then we get to page two, we have a surplus of $1,005,000. And some people might ask, okay, how are you doing? Well, it depends. Our fund balances went down $11 million. District-wide, our deficit went down $1,005,000. It's only a difference of, you know, 12, 13 million. What's what's going on? Well, two major things are going on. Keep in mind, in the fund level, when you buy and pay for capital projects, you expense that. So that was over $13 million. When we convert to the district-wide, we put that on your balance sheet and depreciate it over its estimated use for life. So anytime you're you're in the process of having major capital projects activity, you're going to have a big reconciling item. Likewise, when you refinance debt or get debt in, at the fund level, it's kind of weird how that works, but when you issue long-term debt, that goes into your fund balance. Now personally, when I take out a long-term car loan, I don't necessarily think that's adds to your net worth, and that's when we convert that to the full accrual method, we record that as a liability. So those are the two primary reasons for the change. Starting on page seven are your notes to the financial statements. I'm not going to go through each and every one of those, but the first note, one, talks about your accounting policies and your provisions and how you account for certain items. Note two is an important footnote in that it accounts for your budgetary compliance and what you'll deal with. Note three is your footnote on your deposits and investments, and you do have a certain amount of cash and investments. And one of our recommendations in our letter is, by June 2005, we'll work with you through this year, and we're working with MSBO, but we believe you need additional requirements added to your investment policies, and we've got that addressed in the letter to the board. And that's some of those are kind of technical issues. Your current policy is this for the most part. We only invest in items that are allowed by state law, and that's kind of been how it's been forever. Now, what they're saying is, in this day and age, interest rate risk and custodial risk and custodial credit risk, they want some of those other items to be addressed as well. We're working with MSBO, so hopefully there can be some blanket guidance across the state so hundreds of districts don't have to struggle with it across the board. Note four, your capital assets, your changes there, you have a lot of changes going on. Like I say, your net capital assets are over $48 million, and we expect that to grow again next year because you have over $9 million in your capital projects fund. So we see that to be another significant increase again next year, a lot of activity going on. Note seven, long-term debt. I'll go I'll have you refer you to page 18. Total long-term debt for the district is $72 million before we break out the current portion. And if you'll flip over to page 20, we started the year at $73 million worth of debt, and we ended at 72.6 million worth of debt. Couple other items I'd like to point out this year is your federal program, $779,000. We tested your Title I, no problems there. We did what we call a compliance audit. As long as you receive and expend federal programs, funds of over $500,000, there is an additional report that we have to do. It's called a single audit or a circular A133 audit for compliance. No findings there. That's a standard report, similar what we would have issued in prior years. Don't take it for granted because you have to jump through a lot of hoops, but we did test Title I this year. The other thing I'd like to point out on the federal program, especially, someone mentioned, the elections are coming up in another couple of weeks, and some of the rhetoric, I think I've mentioned that your general fund had, what, $28, $29 million of revenue? And we're talking at the federal level, $700,000. And I don't care who you elect. Well, I do care, but I won't tell you who I care about. But that's irrelevant in that change is coming from the federal government for local education. It's just not there. I mean, it's it's never been a big piece of the pie and in the foreseeable future. It's not. So anything, it's nice when you can get these new grants, but there's strings attached, but it's not a big deal. Like I said, we had the management letter, a couple of recommendations in there, nothing real serious. I think we talked about increasing some insurance and a few items. We went over those in detail. There's a second letter that we addressed the finance committee. There's eight points there as well about estimates and auditors' responsibility. There were no changes in accounting this year, items of that nature. But spend a little time looking through that letter, and I know some of you serve on other boards, and those eight bullet points, if you ever go and you have me at another board or another auditor, and you you want to drill them a little bit, ask them, how about number three or number five or number eight? You know, those are important topics, and you don't take it for granted. When you have to write a few things in those letters, it's not always real fun, and we have a few that you have to write every year. But pretty straightforward letter that you're in compliance and in transition. The last thing I'd like to point out is we've always got good cooperation, and you had good incoming and outgoing transition this year. You know, when Dave left, he left you in good shape, and you've got a good man here came in, and really, the audit, I thought, went pretty pretty smoothly. When you have those changes, you always wonder a little bit about how things will go, and you've got good cooperation from both people. And on the other hand, I'm not real surprised that happened either that way. Had it not happened, I would have been a little bit surprised, and we appreciate that. We'll expect that in the future to have good cooperation, and I know we will. The other item we did discuss just real briefly at the finance committee meeting was you have a new superintendent, you have a new director of finance, and we just touched base on philosophy and communication and on assumptions because everybody does things a little differently, and we want to just make sure that good communication is important. It's not so much when you look at page 24, the budget variances and legal compliance and all those kind of things. It's fine and dandy, and there's lots of different ways to adopt and amend and do budgets. But what's really important is to make sure that the assumptions and where you think you're going to be, I believe that's much more important than whether or not the budget is this much or that much. And you had you had some different philosophies and ways of doing that, and as Mike gets comfortable with that and communicating. Now, I mentioned that to Mike as well. They're more concerned about where where you're going to be and where you think you're going to be, and and I'll throw this out to you, Mike, and if you don't know, that's the okay answer to say. I don't know, and I'll get back with you because all these people need to know. You're just now trying to settle on where you're going to be this year because a couple weeks ago, you're finally finalizing probably your pupil membership count. Probably by now, you have a pretty good handle on that, but now you got to go through and work through the numbers and and see how it went, how that shakes out and see what that means. And your job isn't getting any easier, and I'm not going to tell you that your foundation allowance is 100% safe this year either because there's been a lot of rumblings going on after November. There may be a few things shake out there at the state level, too. But from my perspective, the statements are accurate. Didn't lose any sleep sign in these reports, and you've got good people here that cooperate with us, and we appreciate that. But that all, you have to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Bruce?
Bruce, I wasn't able to attend the finance meeting for that. But in your letter to us, you indicate that the district coverage for the employee dishonesty is woefully below what you recommend. First question would be, do you as an auditor have any hint that we have a potential problem?
We found nothing, nothing at all, but we do have a hint that society has changed, and we do have issues with other districts where there have been problems, and in Lansing area, there's been quite a few issues. And you do have some potential where you have lots of cash, primarily in your agency accounts. Those aren't big dollars, but you've got the 10th grade class doing this and the 11th grade class doing that, and I'm not saying there is any wrongdoing, but there's there's just cash, and we really are starting to look at the profession has changed a lot, too. The question we used to ask as a profession was on the checklist, do you have an employee dishonesty coverage? Yes, move on to the next question. Okay, that must it's there. And now, you start to ask, well, what's your coverage? And that's probably coverage that's been around, I'll bet you, for the last 20 or 25 years, and at the time, it made us an issue. The other issue is the coverage, it's not so much one year, it's second year or third year. I mean, if it's 20 grand, 20 grand, 20 grand, and if you look at it over three years, you're into $60,000 or something like that, but it's not an issue. And from a cost standpoint, I think that's probably under $1,000 of total insurance coverage, and we don't take it lightly telling districts, as tight as things are, how to spend money, but we think from a cost benefit standpoint, if if the day ever came you needed it, you'd be glad you have it, and you probably can appreciate it.
You say $1,000. You're talking premium to us.
Premium, premium, yeah.
To do to do the multiple of what you're.
That's correct. That's what Seth Segal told us.
You do a lot of district, a lot of school district.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, not without mentioning any names.
Yeah.
Are we woefully low?
We believe you are in relation to you're probably you're right, you're, I think, what, we're at 50? Is that what the letter said? You were probably right in the norm with an awful lot of districts are in the process of moving up. I think you were right where the trend was for the last 20 years, and probably you were a little high because we have quite a few districts that were still at the 10 mark. Like in $10,000, there must.
This isn't the minimum.
Well, I think what happens is to it's, you know, when you look at your board insurance and all your insurance books, we've got some real insurance experience here, so maybe I'm out of my league, but you know, the paperwork's about this thick, and I think same thing, you've got some coverage, and and I think a lot of CPA, our firm in particular and others, are starting to look at it and checking on what the rate is. We're just saying, this day and age, we see no reason why there would be a problem like that, but with turnover and transition and everything going on, we just think it's there's a couple of different ways to handle risk, and one of them is insuring it. So that's that's our our point on it. Very good question.
Other questions? Thank you, Bruce. Thanks for coming. As usual, it's nice to see you once a year and also nice to hear that our director report.
I appreciate you getting me on the agenda because I'm off to another school district, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Bruce. Next on our agenda are board reports. First report, president's report. Just a couple of things I'd like to say is, I'd like to encourage the board members, if you haven't, to consider attending the awards, the foundation awards dinner. I think it's going to be a great evening, and it's another opportunity for us to show the foundation that we appreciate their support and what they do for for our students. They work very hard to raise funds to help programs that we have ongoing for our students. And also with Bob being one of the recipients this year, I think it'd be very nice if we could all attend, so I would just encourage you to do so if you can fit it in in your calendar. Also, we talked about having some workshops dealing with issues that board members were interested in. Our first workshop actually will be next our next board meeting, dealing with elementary education. We're also going to tentatively have another workshop on January 24th where we'll have an opportunity to become better informed about adequate yearly progress, what that means, no child left behind, and all those issues, compliance issues that are new to school districts in the last few years so that we we're we're more up to speed in actually what what the law states and that we can speak more definitively with our constituents regarding those issues. And that's tentatively scheduled for January 24th. Finance and facilities.
We have not met since our meeting with Mr. Dunn.
Sounds like it was a good meeting.
It was a very good meeting, very informative. Unfortunately, Scott wasn't able to make that morning, but Rob and I made up for his volume of questions that surely would have come forward.
Good.
Since I have much deeper understanding, probably it's true there were many questions from your side. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Devine. Policy personnel?
We have not met.
Okay. We'll move on to action items. There's four action items. Number four, we'll have to deal with separately. The first three are the approval of minutes from the last board meeting. Number two is approval of board policy 8280, electronic communication devices for students. And number three is approval of board policy 5250, employee use of electronic communication devices. And I entertain a motion for the first to agree.
Pardon?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four, we have to deal with separately. Number four is a tentative resolution designating the regular school election date and authorizing publication of the notice of public hearing, which would be at the following board meeting, and there was a copy of the letter C in the board packet, and we have three choices, and so we have to decide which of the three... And I guess I would open it up for discussion. Is there any preference, which I think?
Yeah, I certainly have a preference from my... Certainly explain it to me, or at least the way I read it or understood it, the May election would be the way to go, because we, for whatever reason, we want to change it, we can, but it's certainly the closest election time to what we've had in the past, and it just appears to me that it allows like another 30 days of late duck. It's not that type of deal.
Right.
Especially when this duck is going to be late. But, uh...
Very.
Very.
Hey, let's clean it maybe.
So I guess my recommendation would clearly be to move it to a May election, as opposed to the June election, which we notoriously had in the past.
The even and odd?
Well, yeah, well, in this case, yeah.
Yeah, every year.
Every year, every year.
I agree with Scott on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Very Democratic.
I guess I would, if there's more discussion, I'd entertain a motion to that effect, that we would move to a election of May, regular election of May, of both even and odd years.
So move.
Support.
We need to have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Felser?
Yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mr. Tin?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Tivido?
Yes.
Okay, so that will come back to us at another meeting.
This is the September.
This is the September. To support this.
Our next meeting will be the public hearing, because that will be your, it will be separate.
Next meeting, November 8th.
November 8th. And then announcements, there are actually, our next board meeting will be on November 8th in the boardroom here at 7 o'clock. This is scheduled as a work session, we will not be on TV 25 at that time. We will, actually, will be leaving the air here, we are going to recess, and then reconvene in a work session to continue work with our consultancy of Kagan on the evaluation tool for our superintendent. So at this point, we will go into recess. The school board, and first, do we have any correspondence?
We do, Mike. We have a nice note from Steve Lampman and his family thanking the board for their hard work here in the district, and they were kind enough to send some cookies our way tonight, so we appreciate that from the Lampmans, and that's Steve, Lori, Lauren, Jake, Madeline, and Blake. So, thank you so much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Nikki, students' report.
Yep. At Wilkshire tomorrow, there's a hospital field trip from 9:00 to 12:00. From 1:00 to 4:00, they're having a principals' meeting at the administration building. December 5th, there's a staff Christmas party at 1:00 p.m. I'll get a little bit of depth about that. It's at Mary DeShane's house, which is 4411 Blanca Williams, and there'll be a white elephant gift exchange, and the menu signup sheet will be posted in the lounge this week. Also, there's a 32nd Annual Log Cabin Holiday, December 2nd, 2004, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. There's, I'm just going to read the article on it. Join your friends for an evening of song and good cheer as we join our voices in caroling at the log cabin. A candlelit path and the inspiring voices of our high school carale and hot apple cider will make this a truly memorable evening, excuse me, for you and your family. That's for Wilkshire. At Ralia, Mr. Van Remen and Mrs. Garcia took the fifth grade classes to the big zoo lesson at Potter Park Zoo all this week, last week, excuse me. Mrs. Jackson, Ms. Rice, and Mrs. McRae's third graders have invited their grandparents to a special person's luncheon on November 23rd tomorrow. The students will serve lunch to their special person in the gymnasium. The market day fundraiser for October was a very big success. Over 500 pies were sold during the order period to raise money for the field trip fund. As an incentive, 15 staff members agreed to get a pie in the face if Ralia students reached their goal of selling 500. On Friday, November 12th, 15 lucky students had their names drawn to be pie throwers, and the student body gathered in the gym where the staff members, including Ms. Tegreeni, got creamed. It was great fun. Pictures of the event are posted on Ralia's website. Progress reports will be sent home to students on November 29th as well. At Murphy, they just finished their scholastic book fair, and it was wonderful. Student Council also had a popcorn sale, and they raised $100. They gave it to the, to Jake Pledo Fund on October 22nd, which is very helpful. Having another, they're having another popcorn sales and fundraiser for mittens and hats December 3rd. They're also sending out, the school's also sending out report cards for goal setting on November 29th. The middle school, they're in the process of the food drive, and they're finishing up conferences tonight. At Meridian, they got a report from North Central, and all their credit is without violation. The volleyball team is heading for state playoffs, hopefully in two weeks, and they've been the state champs for two years now. At the high school, Hazlet High School, the musical was wonderful, it was all last weekend. The girls' basketball has the district championship game. They had it on the 19th at Portland versus Ionia, and their regionals are Monday, 22nd, at Bertrand. TV 25 is preparing for the telethon this year, and a group of students met for planning for teen summit, March 18th, which is going to be, there's going to be various stations throughout the whole day, teaching about issues that teens deal with, violence, drugs, premarital sex, and all that kind of stuff, and the, there was a survey filled out with all the kids through alcohol school, and I think there was, there must have been like 20 options they could have chose, they chose the top eight, and those are the ones that are going to be taught about. Let's see, the NHS food drive went really well. Mrs. Pish, Ms. Pishat's class won, I'm in that fourth hour. I think we got around 1,300 cans just in our class, so, let's see. Winter sports are beginning. Key Club also has had hot chocolate sales tomorrow, they're going to have it tomorrow, and they also had it earlier in October. They also did a van cram, I don't know if you've ever heard of this, but they sit outside with a van and ask people to fill it with food until it's full, with cans and such, and it also helps with the holidays and the food drive, so, that's, let's see, oh, UNICEF, they also helped out with UNICEF trick-or-treating. They asked for money for children in third world countries, I guess. I don't really understand it very much, but that's what they did. Okay, that is my report.
Thanks, Nikki. Next up is our superintendent's report.
Let me just follow up on Nikki's report with our girls' basketball. Our girls won the league championship this past week by defeating LCC, went to the district finals last Friday evening, and were a little bit unsuccessful, but had a great season, and I just want to congratulate Tim Beevy and his entire staff, as well as his players. They had a great season this year, a lot of fun to watch. I want to congratulate the Foundation on their Inspiration Awards Night last Tuesday evening, largest turnout that we've had, I think, since I've been a part of has of public schools. It was truly a great night. They honored Bob Regan, Gil White, and Matt Borland, and it really turned out to be a very, very successful evening, so I'd like to congratulate the Foundation, all of our community members that were able to attend. And then, as Nikki said, we had our play this past weekend, it ran Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening, and just when you think that Eric Wongeman and his crew can't put on a phenomenal show, he proves again that he puts on a great show every year, and for those of you that were able to attend, Fiddler was truly a great performance by all of our kids, and just a first-class job, as always. And then finally, an update on our Director of Support service position. As most of you know, Mike Joseph has resigned. We're in the process of reviewing all aspects of that position, and in the interim, Steve Cook, our Finance Director, will handle transportation. Doris Badgley, who is the Coordinator of Transportation right now, will report directly to Steve. The head custodians are going to report directly to the building-level principals at this time. Bill Hastings will sub for Mike Joseph in an interim position, although he'll not have evaluative responsibilities at this point. Bill is going to report directly to me. As the building principals encounter maintenance problems or custodial issues, they'll report directly to the superintendent myself. Diane Zareba will be subbing for Bill Hastings at this point, in the position of Mail and Food Service. And then, we're going to be meeting with MSBO to determine what is a good way for us to evaluate what we've been doing, and that includes transportation, as well as the maintenance custodial grounds position. Then I'll be working with MSBO directly, and I'll keep you updated as we move along in this process, but it's something that we're going to evaluate very, very closely, and take a look at all aspects of how we've been doing business here. So, that concludes my report.
Can you give any timeline on that?
Scott, we have a timeline right now, we probably are not going to post that position much before the holidays, in the middle of the summer, and we met with an MSBO consultant today to talk about the way that we've been structured here for the last 13 years, and as a result of that meeting, Mr. Cook and Mrs. Jones and I, along with MSBO, are going to take a closer look at the way we've been doing business, and, like I said, evaluate all aspects of it, but it's something we can take our time with, we feel like, right now. It's something that we think is a very, very important position here, and we need to find the right person, so, that's where we're at with it. Any other questions?
Rob?
Yeah, I have it on fairly good authority that you skipped out of the pie thing at Ralia, and I just want to know how you feel about your...
Well, here's what happened. I got over there, and I've got a witness.
Yes, I saw him, he'll tell you what he was doing.
I walked into the gymnasium, and my name was not appearing on the chart, nor was my face, and I said, "I thought I was supposed to be here." In fact, I think I ran into your wife, and as a result of that, I got assigned to secretarial duties in the office while the secretaries participated in the event, so...
Very smart.
And I actually had my camera with me, so I took a picture of him on the phone, so that you could all see it in the event that you started the questions, so...
But I do want to mention that Steve Cook, our Finance Director, his son had the honor of throwing the pie that hit the principal over there, so...
Great.
That's because he sold 20 pies.
His son also made the webpage this week, so, it was a fun day. Really turned out to be...
Actually, front page of the Town Courier as well, so, got some good publicity for it.
It really was a nice event.
Thanks, Rob. We'll move on to discussion items, and our first discussion item is an update on the elementary science program, and Diane Lindwood is going to lead that presentation.
Good evening. Elementary science in Hazlet, I think that if you were to walk into one of our elementary classrooms during science, you would find kids fully engaged, and if you interviewed those children, they would tell you that they love science. The program is hands-on and has been for a number of years, and the kids, it's a subject that the kids really love. The culture at both schools is such that the, if you interview the teachers, the teachers love to teach science, and they're very comfortable teaching science. One of the things that we know is that the demand for scientists and engineers is expected to increase at more than double the rate of all other occupations in the near future. So the ultimate goal for students is to understand their surroundings and the relationship within their surroundings. The subject of science is an excellent example of where authentic instruction occurs, and that's where we know when the kids will get the most learning out of that, it's very hands-on, the kids are engaged with those materials, they're talking to their peers, they're listening to their teacher during those science units. Authentic instruction, what does that mean? It promotes higher-level thinking, kids need to explain, they need to be able to generalize, synthesize information, they need to have deep knowledge, and if you look at the programs, each grade level is doing three to four units a year. So those kids might study electricity, they might study ecosystems, and they have a deep knowledge at the end of that unit. They have substantial conversation about it, and I think that's really important in what comes out in the research. It's not the teacher giving the information as such, but the teacher being the facilitator of giving kids information and building knowledge, and then those kids talking to each other about what they're learning, and then, of course, the connections to the real world and beyond. One of the things I was able to see in a fourth-grade classroom when they were doing ecosystems, is they, you know, they build these ecosystems, land and water, and they've got it in pot bottles, and at, towards the end of the unit, they pollute that system, and then they talk about what happens in that bottle, but they also talk about what happens in the world beyond that with pollution. Scientific literacy, what do we want at the end of the road for our children? We want them to be able to construct scientific knowledge, reflect on what they've learned, and then to use that knowledge in the real world, outside of their classroom. At the elementary level, we use these ECA Science Kits, and they are kids that come to the teachers four times a year with their units, and it is absolutely hands-on learning for the children. And how do we measure what the kids are learning? One of the ways we measure science literacy is through our MEEP scores, and this is a three-year trend of MEEP scores. Just as a reminder, kids get a report, the school gets a report, and they can be Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, or Level 4. We want the children in Level 1 and 2. So, 2002 is the blue, and you'll see the majority of our children are Level 1 and 2. You go to green, 2003, go to red, 2004. Last three years, we have not had children in that Level 4, and the goal is to, as the years accumulate, to get kids from Level 2 to Level 1, from Level 3 to Level 2. This is another way to look at it. You see the blue, Level 1, for 2002, '03 and '04. Yellow is Level 2, red is the Level 3. So by the MEEP measure, the kids in this district at the elementary level are doing well in science, and I think that's, you know, it's attributed to three different things. Teachers loving to teach it, the kids in love with the subject area and the materials that we're able to provide for the students. And that brings me to Jaime Han, second grade teacher, third grade teacher at Murphy, who has put together PowerPoint to tell you about our science kits.
Want to talk to you about our curriculum that we chose. We piloted it three years ago. Last year, all the elementary... Last year, all the elementary classrooms used it, and this is our second full year in the program. It's investigative, hands-on learning, and we decided that when we mapped, we needed to align better with the state benchmarks with our science, as it's always changing. And we felt this program was the best one that we saw there. We adopted this kit in all grade levels, K through five, but kindergarten has their own kits. And so we get first through fifth with the ECA kits. And what we did was try to align all but five of the benchmarks we were able to align with these kits, and then we added in supplemental material. And in other subject areas, we're able to pull that in. So all the benchmarks, K through four, are mapped with the science curriculum. This is a, kind of a, this table shows what each grade level is doing in the science areas, and I've connected them to some of the things that they spiral into in middle school. Again, the double star is a Hazlet kit, and then a Delta kit is kind of a special kit within the program that we're using. There are four areas that we're studying: life science, physical science, earth science, and then technology that all the kits tie into. And ECA, Educational Services, they come in, they train teachers, they pick up and drop off the kits on a specific day. And what's wonderful about them is that everything you need is in that kit. If they have live animals or plants, those are delivered on that day. So it really makes it very easy for the teachers to use and guarantees that people are doing the things that they should be doing as far as the different science areas. This is a kit. Sometimes you receive one, sometimes you receive four. This is a kit for earth materials for third grade, and it was all in one box, which we then unpacked. But sometimes you may get four boxes, and they can be quite heavy. But as you can see, there's a wealth of information and material in there. Second-grade units are life cycle of butterfly changes, which is a unit on matter and force and motion. Here's some children observing the butterflies that they received as larvae, watch going to the chrysalis stage and then the adult stage. And you can see they're very engaged. Some more children, and they learn about the anatomy of the butterfly as well in second grade, go through the complete life cycle, and then release them at the end. And here's the unit that second graders are working on currently at Murphy. It's a unit changes on matter, and they're exploring dissolving of solutions, evaporation, all related to the three states of matter. Third grade, we do sound, earth materials, chemical tests, and plant growth, our four units. The children investigate by building their own materials. Here, they're building soundboard harps, and they experiment with different tension and pitch, and they're all doing their own, they're doing their own work and then writing about it. As I said, they're writing, they're using the scientific method, they're predicting, they're doing the experiments, observing what happens, collecting the data and conclusions. And all the student books that we have facilitate that very well. Here's a class who, as a final assessment in the sound unit, they make their own instrument. They give an oral presentation about their instrument. They have to demonstrate pitch and volume, and it's one of the assessments that we use to evaluate this unit. Here's third graders right now at Murphy. We're doing earth materials, and two students are journaling about the separation of the different materials. They started with what looked like a chocolate chip cookie, but was called a mock rock, and they separated out all the minerals and then broke it down and mixed it with water. And here they're studying, studying that. These children, in the next part of that investigation, have separated out materials by the process of evaporation, and in the trays, they're looking at the crystals that they've pulled out. In fourth grade, they do ecosystems, electrical circuits, land and water, and motion and design. Here are the ecosystems that Diane was talking about, and each pair of students builds that. They study the animals and plant life, and then in the end, they do pollute them and see what the effects of that are. Fourth grade also does electrical currents. They build their own circuit board, and the children in the picture are just lighting up the light bulb with their circuit board that they built, and pretty pleased. Mm-hmm. Fifth grade does earth, moon, and sun, energy works, which is need, magnets and motors, experiments with plants and the human body systems. Here's some children are out studying the earth movement. They also do a human sundial activity for the motion of the sun movements of the shadows. And they, when it's sunny, they can do these things. And Mrs. Rasmussen said they've had to wait till today to do their sundial. Field trips are, I think, a very important part of exploring science. I hear children at the Waterloo Recreation Area, just this past week, all the third grades from Murphy went, and in Ralia, they went earlier this fall when they had that kit. And they were able to study huge rocks and mineral samples, have a guided walk of the geology of that area, about a forty-five minute hike, and then they have a beautiful center down there as well. At Murphy and at Ralia, we try to encourage families to come in. These are two children with their families who came in during the sound unit to talk to us about their instruments and how they worked. And so we ask people to come with their hobbies or their careers and share with us to enhance all of our curriculum areas with science as well. We also use resources in our district. Ellen Cunningham is a NISD teaching consultant, and she came in and spoke to all the third grades about parts of the ear, how we hear, but also students who are hearing impaired, what that would sound like to the regular hearing, the children who hear normally. And did a wonderful presentation, also talked about her job and what she does. We use resources in our community in science. This gentleman came in and tuned a piano, showed the children how he did, and brought in several instruments and was able to show them different pitches. He had a hundred-year-old organ pipe that he showed the children, and so we try to utilize our community as well. These are some comments. At the end of each of the units are self-assessment for the children, where they can write how they felt about things and things they learned. Here's some of the comments. "I feel excited about our investigations. I like the eardrum experiment the best. It was fun to make the sound, sand bounce. My partner and I work great together, learning science, and science makes me feel happy." And I think that that sums up our science curriculum with our ECA units has been very successful. So thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to comment. I was fortunate enough to be at Murphy one day with Mike and going into the classrooms, and one of them was doing the ecosystems. And it was really interesting walking around, talking to the kids and asking them questions about what they were doing to see just how really engaged in it they were, and they really did know, you know, what was happening and what they were polluting it with and how, you know, how it was affecting their plant that they were working with. It was really interesting to see the way that was working. Yeah, because it was very much not a dry science lesson. It was very much one that the kids were enjoying and obviously really liked doing and were learning from. So I really appreciated seeing that.
What happened before this curriculum? I mean, what were they using before? Was it as hands-on, for example?
Some of the units were. The problem was that some grade levels were and some grade levels weren't. You know, for example, at third grade, we have a very similar, we were using the Wisconsin fast plants, which we use. But some of the grade levels, there were gaps. And so when we mapped, we wanted to make sure those gaps were filled.
We had some teacher-developed science units that we used over the years. Part of the problem with that program was it was well-intentioned at the beginning, but some grade levels, the units, depending on which groups of teachers developed them, were considerably better than others. The other part of that was whenever you try to successfully implement a hands-on science program, it requires a lot of consumable materials. And to maintain those is rather difficult. And, for example, Oakness and East Lansing both have half-time teachers who spend half of their time supplementing and adding to and updating these units. So we came across ECA, which pretty much will supplement, will purchase for you any materials you're interested in. And then the beauty is, they put everything you need in that unit, absolutely everything. So our teachers can devote their time and creativity to actually teaching science and not running to Myers, you know, in the middle of the night to get alcohol or not drinking. Ordering live animals, butterflies, whatever they need. And this company is from Wald Lake, and they have provided excellent service for us. Occasionally, something will come that's broken. You give them a call. They come right up within twenty-four hours to replace it. On occasion, we've had animals that weren't alive when they arrived, and they have a huge warehouse where they actually grow all of these animals, and they will come and provide those for you. So I think, though many of our elementary teachers are not, don't have science majors, this particular curriculum and the support that ECA has given us allows them to do an excellent job teaching, teaching science. The kids, they have eight to ten weeks to deliver the program, so there's no, well, maybe I'll do it next week, or I'll skip science today, and they can't because they have a window of time, and they have to teach the curriculum in that eight or ten week block. So ECA has allowed us to be quite flexible. This past year, we actually moved a unit from second to fourth and put in a different second-grade unit because we felt it would meet the benchmarks and the developmental age of the children better. They also have allowed us to make any number of changes. If the state curriculum changes, they allow us then to maneuver and manipulate what we do and what we want. So it's been really very, very encouraging. And as Ja says, for the first time in many years, our teachers actually are excited about teaching science. Our students are loving science, and it's not something that our folks dread to do. So we're pretty excited about it.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think what this curriculum does is it brings science alive for kids. And as you said, with authentic instruction, they're going to absorb it much better than they have in the past. Mike, I guess my question is, in terms of the teachers, how much time and effort is put, has to be put in on the part of the teachers to become familiar with these kids and, you know, get up and running?
They have a teacher training video with each kit that you can watch and explains all the experiments. They also have a teacher manual that's pretty thorough. And for any curriculum, you have to take the time to go over the manuals and study the material. But I think that the material is available for everyone now, where it's not everyone might have felt comfortable with science, and you really didn't have maybe the resources. It's all right there for you. And so, you know, no more than any other area, as far as our amount.
It's very user-friendly, though.
Very user-friendly.
One of the things we did also was purchase manuals for all of our teachers, so that even though a manual comes in the kit and you have to send it back, all of our teachers have their own sets of manuals, so that they have them available to study and use over the summer vacation, so they're not in that time crunch of only having that available for eight weeks. They have their own, which gave them a much more sense of security.
Yeah, and they bought them the summer before we started the kit, so we had the summer to look over them, which was wonderful, rather than a week before, because...
Other questions? Yeah, Rob?
Diane, you said two years? We've been using this new curriculum, is it right?
Two years. They piloted it about three years ago.
Three years ago.
Right. So I guess the question really is, can we tell results yet? Is there, maybe it's just too early to know if it's made a difference. I mean, even the MEEP scores that you showed, I think, might not fully have been affected by this curriculum.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, all right.
It takes a couple of years for this, that new curriculum to kick in to see if you've got what kind of other results you might, you may have.
And as far as enthusiasm for science, we can see it. We're excited about science.
Well, I can just say, having a third and a fourth grader, that I can see it at home.
And I can corroborate that. My son's been through it for two years now, just is very excited by it.
Yeah.
It's a very tactile, hands-on, they can relate to it.
I know there was a survey done three years ago at Murphy on science with the children, and one of the things that the children said is they wanted a science program that was more hands-on. So...
Oh, yeah.
Just as Bev, who walked in that science, in the room, and the kids were doing science, I invite any of you to, you know, come either to Murphy or Ralia. Somebody's got to be doing, you know, science during the day. And it's just very impressive to see those kids. They are very engaged. They're talking about their learning and showing their little flock of the groups, and they're just very excited about the subject area.
Isaiah says, you know, counting down the days from the chrysalis butterfly emerging. And it's just, it's very dynamic.
The teachers will take the unit, and they'll, there's so much to teach, how do you try to integrate it? And they integrate the language arts with it, you know, we're all learning how to do that. Second grade with that butterfly unit, the teachers are reading books to the kids on butterflies, and then, you know, the kids are writing stories about butterflies or information articles. So, you know, it just, it's a great curriculum.
I just also need to add, answering questions about the ecology and the effects of pollution, I mean, this is something tangible that Isaiah's asked me, "Well, Dad, why do they do these things if we know what the results and how it damages the ecology?" And then you have to get into the economic aspects of it and how that tends to sometimes overwhelm it or override ecological concerns. So it does stimulate critical thought and good discussions with younger children.
I also have to say, I like the idea of the teachers spending times, time thinking about how they're going to teach the lesson and reading the manual than running at Myers trying to find the right-sized pot bottles and straws and, you know, all the other various paraphernalia that you would need to run some kind of an experiment. And that's got to be a big plus right there, because they use a lot of their personal time to do things like that.
And money.
Yeah.
And money to buy the consumables. I think that was the biggest relief for our staff, was that everything they need is there.
I think we'll be surprised when we have an opportunity to test these kids on this and how much they know. I was there for the butterfly unit as well, and how much they retain is just unbelievable. I could ask them now, two months later, "Tell me about the life cycle of the butterfly," and they're going to whip it right off. It was very educational for me.
And we are assessing with our own unit assessments. Actually, the third grade developed Ralia and Murphy science assessments for each unit at our last professional development, and used some of the things we learned at our last professional development day on developing assessments. And the children do very well with the critical thinking areas, as well as just, it's amazing the concepts they can grasp when everything is on them, so...
Yeah, we just completed last week, teacher-written assessments for all of our science units. And some of them are MEEP-like in format to give our students practice on doing those MEEPs. So that's, you know, the final stage of mapping was assessment. So we've developed the map, and now we're into developing the common assessments to go along with... So we've developed the map and now we're into developing the common assessments to go along with, um, to all the core academic areas. And so we've just finished science at the elementary and we're moving into language arts, so. And we've also finished math, math, just as an aside, we've developed the common math assessments. So, uh, it's been a huge project. I know some of you thought we'd maybe never get done, but we are moving along. And I think it's going to make a world of difference for our kids in terms of what they can and cannot do. So, pretty excited about it.
Thanks, Ja.
John, Diane, thank you for coming tonight. So it was good to hear that this is taking hold like we thought it would.
Right.
That's great, thank you. Our next discussion item is an update, um, on our current budget and outlook for the upcoming budget. Steve Cook is here to, uh.
Yeah, I think he is.
Make a presentation and answer any questions. Steve? Scott, what were you saying?
Does anybody have a copy to hand out?
Yeah. What'd you say?
I, you're gonna, he's gonna, you're gonna use this too then, right?
Right.
Okay, I'll just stay here.
Does everybody have a copy?
At the request of Superintendent Duddy, I put together a, um, short budget presentation this evening. I will basically clarify that this is just an informational budget update. It's not a formal budget update that we're gonna approve. I will bring back to the board sometime in January the formal budget amendment for the first part of, um, the budget year. One of the reasons that we didn't put together the formal budget amendment this evening is because we just completed a conversion process of all our accounting structure. The state just basically made, uh, school districts change over the way that they reported all of their information to the state. And so, uh, we just completed that process. In fact, we just, uh, submitted our report last week. So we didn't really have the time to put all of that information together in a formal budget update. But I will run through the numbers that we have to date. It just will not be something that we actually formally approve this evening. I basically broke up the, uh, the presentation into three small sections. The first, we'll talk a little about the oh-three, oh-four audit results. As you remember, we had Bruce Dunn from Maynard Custer and Allison a couple of board meetings ago presenting our final numbers. And we'll just review those briefly to kind of give a perspective of how that takes us into oh-four, oh-five. We'll actually look at oh-four, oh-five, we'll look at the conditions and things that have changed since the beginning of the year to give you some numbers and perspective on where we're at this year. And we'll look just briefly at oh-five, oh-six. Um, I included in your packet, uh, kind of a draft timeline of what the oh-five, oh-six budget process will be. We'll briefly review that. And we'll talk a little about some of the budget challenges that are facing school districts, not only Hazlet, but all districts, um, for both actually this year and potentially next year. So I'd like, like to turn, turn first of all to the first, um, handout, which basically is a summary of where our audit ended up at the end of the year. If you look in the first column, this was our final approved, um, budget, uh, last budget adjustment of our oh-three, oh-four budget. We basically said that we were in increased fund balance or have an excess revenues of about five hundred seventy-five thousand. We actually came in at about five hundred ninety thousand, which means, um, we were a little better than what we had predicted by about fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, we started out the year at about one point nine million dollars in fund balance. With the addition of five hundred ninety thousand dollars in excess revenues this year, we basically ended up the end of last year at about two point five million dollars in fund balance. Just a brief synopsis of where those particular budget variances, as we look at budget variances, um, which are basically different from what we actually predicted. We had about a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars difference in revenues. Most of those numbers came in the area of state and federal, um, in grants. And the way that we recognize grants, we actually only record the revenue when we actually expend the money. And so we had some carryover monies that weren't, um, recognizing revenues. And we had an offset expenditure amount, um, a positive variance on, on the expense side. So those two pretty much wash out. That's pretty consistent of what we've had in revenue variance. That's actually a negative variance on the revenue side. If you look on the expenditure side and total instruction, that's where over half of our budget is spent, basically in basic instruction, which is classroom teachers and such, direct instruction. Uh, we had a positive variance of about fifty-six thousand. Most of our actual budget variances come in the area of total support services, which is our non-instructional support services, all of our added needs type of services, which included general administration, instructional staff, the counselors, all of those types of support services. That was about five hundred thousand. Community services was a positive variance of about thirty-three thousand. Outgoing transfers, which is our ISD, uh, tuition that we have to pay to the ISD, we budget around two million dollars. We, we're a little, um, more in expenditures in that area. Our operating transfers are the monies that we shift to both food service and athletics. We had a positive variance, uh, in that area. Total expenditure variance, uh, positive about six hundred and fifteen thousand, which gave us a total budget variance of about four hundred and twenty-four thousand. And that was about fourteen thousand, better than we had, um, projected at the beginning of the year. Just to review briefly what the budget variances have been over the prior years, just to kind of give you a little historic perspective. You can see they range anywhere between one point five and two point six eight percent. The average over the last four years is the far red bar is, uh, one point nine five percent. That is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars we budgeted for oh-four, oh-five, a five hundred thousand dollar budget variance. So you can see historically, we're pretty close to where we believe we're gonna be, at least, uh, from a variance perspective. Talk just a little about fund balance. Fund balance is a lot of things the boards like to focus in. It's kind of what some people call the rainy day fund or their savings fund. This is basically excess monies that the districts has, um, in their coffers, so to speak. As you can see, the trends over the last four years, we have been successful in adding fund balance. I will tell you that you'll see there's two actual areas, the red area and the blue area. The total bar represents the total fund balance. And you can see at the bottom, it shows the percentages and what those have been increasing over the years. And then we have what we call the unreserved portion, which is basically the portion that's not set aside for any specific purpose. The blue bar represents all of those things, either in budget form or board action, where the board sets aside certain portion of their fund balance for future expenditures. And you can see that basically at the end of oh-three, oh-four, we ended at about two point five million dollars in fund balance. The blue section, which is about five hundred thousand dollars, actually represents the budget variance that we budgeted for oh-four, oh-five, which is a deficit. So we had to set aside that amount of our fund balance for that. So unreserved at the end of the year was about eight percent, total fund balance was about ten point six percent. And if you look at oh-four, oh-five, where we're projecting, uh, we're gonna roughly end up the year at the same of where we were at the end of this year. You ask yourselves, well, where do we compare to other districts? I know we look at MEEP scores, we look at instructional data. I prepared just one slide to give you a perspective of where our fund balance, um, compares to other districts in the area. These aren't all the districts, but this is some data that was, uh, supplied through a survey through the Center of Michigan Business Officials Association. The Hazlet School District is, um, highlighted there. As you can see, we're, as far as fund balance is concerned, and this is unreserved, which was that, that, um, red portion that I showed you in the, in the prior slide, we're about eight percent. If you look at other districts, we're probably pretty on the low side. Now, you could argue that that's good or bad. It's good to the extent that we're allocating resources to children and we're not really saving money. You know, we're basically allocating resources that we have. Historically, Hazlet has been a district like that. As you compare us to other districts, like I say, we're, um, on the lower side, to the negative side. Obviously, we're low in, in what our savings or our fund balance is. We have to borrow every year to get through regular operations because of the way that state funds school districts. Two years ago, we borrowed one point nine million, this year, we borrowed one point three million. So that was less, mostly due to the fact that we added the fund balance. So, um, you know, there's a big debate on where you could be on fund balance. I think we're pretty adequate. We could probably have, you know, finance directors always like to have as much fund balance as you can. But this kind of just gives you a perspective of where we stand. Just shift focus to the two thousand four, oh-five budget. This is what was adopted by the board in June. As you can see, we had a budget deficit, um, budgeted about five hundred thousand. We anticipate a budget variance of about five hundred thousand. Budget variance represents the amount of, um, unexpended budget line items. And I gave you the historical perspective of where we've been over the years. This is the way that we budgeted in the past. That basically gives us a balanced budget and a fund balance ending the year at about two point five million dollars. So we're pretty much unchanged, all else things being equal. Well, what's happened this year to change the world for Hazlet School District? One of the big increases is the foundation allowance, not necessarily the amount of the foundation allowance, but we budgeted a reduction of about thirty-seven students blended. We came in at about, um, actually, we were down a few students, but we were up to what our budget projections are of about thirty students. So that added about two hundred thousand dollars in fi- additional foundation allowance money. We had some, we just recently received word that we're gonna get some more money in ESL area for, um, our ESL program. We had some federal grant adjustments of additional carryovers from prior year and monies that are allocated this year, special ed. We had some additional money from their final settlement at the end of the year. We had some miscellaneous revenue adjustments of ten thousand. That gives us, uh, an additional revenue of about two hundred and seventy-one thousand. On the expenditure side, um, we added an assistant principal at the high school with benefits and salary. That's about a hundred and three thousand dollar increase. We did offset some of that cost by not hiring the security position that was initially slated for the high school to help out. Uh, we did have a reduction in Stan Hicks contract, who was helping out in the interim. So that helped offset some of that additional assistant principal cost. Uh, we had some miscellaneous equipment purchases for some additional things that we bought. We had some, uh, items unfortunately stolen over the summer. So we had some additional monies that were spent in that area. And miscellaneous salary adjustments of about ten thousand for a total increase in expenditure of about eighty-eight thousand. In the area of athletics, we did bump up our gate receipts by about ten thousand dollars. After some discussion with our athletic director, we feel that that's probably was an unrealistic target. Historically, last year, we had about seventy-three thousand dollars in gate receipts. We bumped it up ten thousand dollars. And at this point, we're not sure that we can, and meet that additional amount, so we decreased that by ten thousand. Put all those numbers together in both revenues and expenditures, we're looking at a potential increase of our current position of about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, all else things being equal. And that's assuming the budget variance remains at what we projected originally. And we'll have a little better figures when we come to the formal budget, um, adjustment in January. We'll have a little better feeling of what that picture is. So if you add that to our current existing fund balance of two point five million, you end up the year at about two point seven million, which brings our total fund balance, um, from about ten point four percent to eleven percent. Well, you ask yourself, what about the unknowns? Well, the biggest unknown is you've probably read in, in the papers and all the political, political things that are going on right now. Pretty much, the consensus is that we probably will have a proration. The only question at this point is how much? Um, they actually have scheduled a revenue consensus meeting in December, which will review the oh-three, oh-four projections to see where the state ended up last year. They normally have a revenue consensus meeting in January, which looks at the current fiscal year, oh-four, oh-five. Probably sometime in January, we'll have a better feel, actually, we'll have a better feel, hopefully, mid to end of December, where we might, where the state ended up in oh-three, oh-four. So we'll get kind of a picture of where that might be. As far as dollar amounts, you know, I've seen anything between fifty and a hundred and fifty dollars per student. It just all depends upon where those revenue numbers come in. And there's all the, also the politics involved in that. Do they actually cut schools again, because we've had mid-year cuts the last two years? So this would be politically a difficult thing for legislators to do. But if you equate it a hundred dollar proration, that's about two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for our district. Mid-year purchase for buses, there's a possibility we may have to purchase another bus. We've delayed that purchase the last two years. Unfortunately, last year, we came mid-year and had to purchase a bus. We may be in that situation again because unfortunately, buses, um, deteriorate and we have to replace those, those fleets. So if we were to have to purchase a bus, that would be an additional sixty-five thousand dollars. Special education is always an area that's difficult to predict as far as what we need to do in that area. In addition to that, any unknown purchases or other things that might happen between now and the end of the year. So really, the basic unknown at this point is proration. Um, if we were to get the hundred dollar proration, we had to purchase a bus, obviously, that hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to the good now becomes a deficit position. And at that point, we'll have to determine, do we make mid-year reductions and try to cut between now and the end of the year? Do we use fund balance or what exactly we do at that point? And, uh, I'll be working with Superintendent Duddy once we get some figures and, and Sharon Jones to, to bring a recommendation to the board of what we do at that point. So that kind of summarizes the oh-four, oh-five budget, where we are to date. Like I say, we'll be bringing a formal budget adjustment sometime in January. I'd like to move the discussion just quickly to oh-five, oh-six. In your packet, I had a, uh, attached handout of what the, the budget process basically entails. I didn't include it in here because it was a little lengthy. But essentially, in January and February, we put together, um, estimates. We work with staff, union leaders, all of the student groups, everybody to put together a budget plan. We put together kind of a tentative budget plan in May, it's reviewed with the superintendent, potentially board committees. And we essentially put it out for public hearing and it's adopted at the end of June by, um, the Board of Education. State law requires that we adopt a budget at the end of June. And that's where our plan will be tentatively, uh, for putting the budget together. Unfortunately, we, we do have, um, contact negotiations that will be starting sometime in the spring. So depending upon where those things land, um, that could change, uh, the picture for oh-five, oh-six. Some of the challenges for oh-five, oh-six, just, um, very quickly, foundational allowance, we don't know where that's gonna be. We've basically had flat fi- flat funding for the last three years. And oh, by the way, we've had prorations every single year and potentially this year would be three years in a row. So we don't know that we're gonna get any new revenue. Our enrollment projections basically show that we would probably decrease anywhere between twenty and thirty students based upon our, uh, numbers as of this point. As I mentioned, we have negotiations, which is always, um, dependent upon the budget. If we were to give, this is just a hypothetical, one percent increase and se- and the step increases that are scheduled based upon step increases in the contracts, that's roughly a hundred and thirty-five dollars per student. Retirement costs, I don't know if any of you have read, but basically retirement costs are going up significantly. All, um, projections are that it will be at least a two percent increase in retirement. That's the rate that the state charges on all our salary dollars. That would be equated to about a hundred dollars per student. We have health insurance costs, which is another, um, difficult area to manage, anywhere between fifteen and twenty percent on average over the last few years. That's another seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five dollars student. You put all those things together and you're looking at potential increases of about a million dollars. Even on the low side, that's roughly about three hundred dollars per student. So in order to balance that out, you'd have to have an increase from the state, roughly three hundred and forty dollars per student to balance it out in this just very brief scenario. Well, we've never had a three hundred and forty, um, dollar increase, um, in the foundational allowance since the proposal as institution, um, or inception. So these are some of the challenges that we're facing. You know, we don't know how we're gonna tackle them at this point, um, but I just throw those out there to kind of give a preview of where we're going. And I would open it up for questions at this point, if anyone has any specific questions they can answer.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, is there a rule of thumb for, um, what we should have as fund balance?
Well, there's a lot of, a lot of uses for fund balances. Most, most people would say between ten and fifteen percent is a relatively good level of fund balance. It all depends upon what your cash needs are. Unfortunately, we're a borrowing district, so that we have to borrow every year. And so, you know, if we were to not be in a borrowing mode, we would potentially have to add, you know, another million, million and three to fund balance to get to where we wouldn't have to, wouldn't have to borrow to get through regular operations. But, um, like I say, it just all depends upon what the, um, objectives of the board are. Do they wanna spend all their resources or do they wanna save resources? Fortunately, we, you know, we've done pretty good, even given all the cuts, um, in foundational allowance mid-year over the last three years, we've done pretty well to maintain our fund balance. Unfortunately, there's only so many things you can cut and you get to the point where, you know, now you're going to the classroom and hopefully we won't have to do that, but.
It'd be tempting to look at two and a half million dollars in fund balance and think we're in pretty good shape until you see where we are relative to other schools. And I just, I didn't know if there's a.
There really isn't a benchmark. I wanna say last time that I looked at statewide, um, I think it's about fourteen percent for fund balance, total fund balance. That was about two years ago, so that may have changed given, um, you know, school funding at the last year. So, uh, they have an up, the state hasn't updated their total state numbers, um, as of yet. But it was about fourteen percent last time I remember looking. Just kind of gives you a feel statewide over there.
Do you personally, would it help you to have a board position on that?
Um, there are some districts that do adopt a policy of fund balance. It says they have to maintain, um, a certain percentage. Obviously, you know, it forces you to make difficult decisions if in fact you're faced with those types of things. You know, when it comes to negotiation, fund balance is usually the first thing that unions are gonna look at. And so, you know, I think we're at least in a pretty good position there because, you know, we can argue we're pretty low in fund balance. So whatever we have to give in some type of raises, it either come from the state or some type of, um, ways that we can be a little more efficient in the way we budget. You know, I guess it just depends on if the board wants to lock themselves into, to that position. Obviously, from the financial directive position, it's always to have some, you know, some checks and balances.
More the better, in your opinion, right?
Yeah, you know, I meant, we've had balanced budget amendment at the national level, but you can argue we've never really, you know, we've not done that. So, you know, it's, it's a matter of whether you actually follow with what.
They can print money, we can't.
Other questions for Steve? Steve, what? So we'll expect you to be back in January.
January, to do the formal first budget amendment. It probably won't look much different than that unless we get some figures on proration. And I think it's probably a better, uh, time as far as timing, because we'll have a better figure hopefully at that point of what the state's gonna do. And so we'll be able to come to you and say, hopefully, we have a better figure of what that proration might be. Because at this point, it's just up in the air.
Okay, Mike? Steve, I, I always enjoy, I find these very entertaining, these enrollment projections that you put on the back. And I, I, you didn't discuss the, um, they're always entertaining. I mean, you've taken them out so far that there's literally no chance of being, in my view, even close to accurate. When you take them out to this far, I mean, you're out to the two oh-fourteen and fifteen here. And that's kind of interesting to show that we're gonna be so low. I mean, we're losing two hundred students here in, in the course of that period of time. Couple of questions. One, in order to do these assumptions like this, I, is the MSU child? One, in order to do these assumptions like this, is the MSU child development factor factored into this at all?
Not in this particular, this was an analysis that was carried out from the prior finance director, Dave Martell. Basically, what it looks at is retention ratios for the last five years. It looks at grade levels of where we potentially, you know, move from year to year on those types of things. And obviously, it's only meant as a tool just to kind of look at where we might be. Obviously, there's ways to reduce that.
I just don't, I don't want anybody to look at this and think, my gosh, this is, this is fact. Because the state doesn't even let you go out this far. They only let you go out for five years when you go through the bond issues. So anything beyond five is, in my view, fantasy anyway. But I, but I, my curiosity was, was one, does school of choice involve with any of this?
It potentially can affect your numbers. There are some districts that.
But is it, it isn't in here? I mean, we could always go to school of choice to beef any of these up or restrict any of them.
It's based on the same level of schools of choice that we currently have. So if we decided we wanted to increase those numbers, that could potentially.
Okay, so school of choice is in here then, at the current level?
At the current rate that we currently.
And carried on for future years?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
And this, this is crystal ball, no question about it. It's not meant to be.
You mean we can't hold you to these?
It factors.
I would, I would think he wouldn't want you to do that, so.
Thank you.
Certainly not make it any.
Scott, we do know that the high school population in Michigan peaks in two thousand and nine, demographic.
Two thousand and nine in Michigan?
And then it goes down at about three percent a year statewide.
But are we average? I mean, are we?
We're never average, we're bum average.
I know you're not.
Actually, we're not, we're declining at a slower rate than most Midwest states.
Right.
That most West states, Midwest states like Iowa and other already started their downward.
But by we, I meant Hazlitt compared to the rest of the state.
Oh, I don't know how Hazlitt, no.
I mean, because I suspect that a school district like Detroit would skew the numbers for us because.
This ain't being on school, this is just based on demographics, the number of kids we know we have and their age progressions. It isn't specific to, those numbers aren't allocated across the state.
What's causing that, you know?
We just have fewer people, smaller families, and fewer families of childbearing, our population is aging quite quickly.
I can relate to that.
Steve, a question for you. We had a very pleasant surprise with the increase in net students over last year. What was that pinpointing for? Or how did we, the attrition level wasn't nearly as high as we anticipated.
Most of.
Well, we're talking thirty, we're talking thirty, which is two hundred thousand.
We're down probably two point, I think it was two point four students from a year ago in total population. From a year ago, total population. But we anticipated being down probably more like thirty or thirty-five students. Now, some of that was, some of it was schools of choice, but some of it was just natural growth too. And when you talk about schools of choice, you got to be a little bit careful because you have students that have gone to school here, that have left and moved to surrounding districts that continue to be educated here. So they come back and they are entered as schools of choice.
Most of our increases were at the secondary level. Most of our decreases were at the, you know, the elementary and mostly at the elementary level. We were pretty stable at the two through five, the K-one is where we lost.
Really small kindergarten class.
Yeah, we had a very small, we were down eighteen, eighteen kindergarten for last year. And that's obviously a trend depending upon if those move on, that could potentially affect first grade for next year. So depending upon, you know.
I'd also add that our enrollments up at Meridian.
But we can only get so, we can only go so high there.
That's true, that is true. Facility wise, we only have so much room. But the high school numbers were very, very, we were pleasantly surprised with the numbers that we had there. I anticipated that we were going to be down well below nine hundred into the eight-seventies this year and we're up over nine hundred, so.
Is it due to the new administration team over there or is it?
I think it's probably due to the new administration.
No, it's probably the.
Skittered the former guy.
It's a swimming pool. It's a swimming pool.
It's a swimming pool.
That's what did it.
You know, I think, and Steve, I know you know this, the, the early indication for next, the state's next fiscal year, oh-four, oh-five, oh-six, is a billion dollar shortfall. So the prospects of three hundred and forty dollars to the foundational allowance, it's not going to happen. I think we got to.
Put a good word in for us, Don.
This will probably be one of the more difficult budget year for school districts. Because I've said, a lot of districts have cut the last couple of years because they've been forced to. But, you know, it's, you know, there's only certain areas that you can take right off the top. And those are things that we've been trying to avoid up to this point. Hopefully, we'll continue to do.
Any other questions for Steve?
Steve, thank you.
Next, we move to board reports, finance and facilities. Finance and facilities?
We have not met.
Policy and personnel?
As far as I know, we didn't have Matt, Matt was gone. Did the committee actually meet while I was gone?
We met, yes, we did. We did.
Yeah, okay.
We met over a personnel issue briefly. It's the last board meeting, which we didn't report on last board meeting because it was a work session. So we did talk about a pending issue that I think has worked out pretty much to what you just agreed upon. So we had, I don't know exactly the conditions of the termination, but we had somebody resign. Worked out to our benefit.
To everybody.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
One thing I'd just like to share at this point, I guess, would be, and I know, Mike, was it Rob? Did you go for the whiteboard presentation?
I did not.
Who did, who went?
Well, Sharon and I had the opportunity.
I also once saw it.
I'd like to hear a little bit about.
It's a smart board, actually.
Smart board.
I'll let Krista talk about it.
I had actually had an opportunity to talk to Krista Chernley at the foundation dinner. And she was telling me about this smart board that she had placed in her first grade classroom. And Krista's a new teacher to Hazlitt this year. She was actually a sub last year for Becky Park, but this is her first year in Hazlitt with a full classroom. And it is just unbelievable, this smart board. And that was provided by the foundation. But I went in and it is a computer on the wall. And she can go right up and just touch it. And, you know, any of her students can go up and make the letter U if they want to, or write the word cup with their finger. And then all you have to do is push a button, it turns it to text. So the kids can go up, they can drag and click things if they need to make matches, match things. They can take it and they can drag it to the correct box. She can pull up the Hazlitt Public Schools website. She just, I stood right there with her and she just went like this, went right to it. So they can go in and they can pull up spelling lists or it is just unbelievable. I wish every classroom could have one.
And you can load assignments in there, pull it up, teach off of it, make adjustments.
She goes, see it?
What's the unit cost on something like that?
Thirty-five hundred dollars per classroom. I, I, I think that every teacher that has had the opportunity to see it in action is envious.
And Jill Sabrowski also has it too, the two teachers at Wilshire.
The two teachers that are in there right now. And I'm sure that once it gets through the district, everybody's going to want one.
Foundation, do you want to get out there and play a lot?
Yeah, I want one too.
How many classrooms do we have?
Oh, in the district?
Yeah, seriously.
Well, we have forty each district, elementary alone. And we probably have a hundred and sixty at the middle school and how many at the high schools?
All sixty, sixty classrooms.
We probably have a hundred and seventy.
Is this a tool, is it a mini date? Or is it go across the board?
You know, from our perspective, the success of these two smart boards, really the two staff people who are so enthusiastic. Yes, and, and we are talking right now, it's just in the kind of baby infant stage of developing a little technology mini grant program where we would ask Jeff to put out a mini grant and have five or six available for teachers who really want to have the smart boards in their classrooms and who would really utilize them. And then be able to gradually implement or put smart boards in classrooms where teachers can use that technology. We've had, as you know, two computers in every classroom in the district for many, many years. Some are well utilized and some are not. And a lot of it depends on the expertise of the teacher, the interest, and their ability to transfer and transform their curriculum like that. So these two gals have just done an incredible job in one week. What is it, one week, one, two weeks? That's all they've been in those classrooms. And it's amazing what they have.
It really is. You know what I thought was so neat too is how you could take a student who may be more audio, a student that might be more visual. I mean, you can adapt this to a particular student's needs, which is Sonya, it'll talk, you can hear it, you can hear it say something to you. You know, you can hear the voices come through and it was just remarkable.
Also, very, very efficient for a teacher who might develop something with her class. Let's say they do a little report on the smart board together. Well, she can save it. Now she can actually paste that into a newsletter that goes home, doesn't have to recopy things. Once the spelling lists are in there, they're in there permanently. There's not a redo, redo, redo piece. So the, the uses are unlimited. They've gone into websites, now you think first graders, but they've gone into the Dairy Council of Michigan's website and pulled out all the food groups and the kids can actually move the foods around. It's amazing, just amazing.
Two questions. How prevalent is the use of this technology right now in mid-Michigan classrooms?
I don't know, not very much.
Has anyone thought about a strategic alignment with the manufacturers of this product? And working out some sort of a partnership where we could be a test school for this technology and we could get some sort of funding grants, cut some sort of a deal, just be basically their guinea pig and implement this technology within the school system?
That's a good thought.
Yeah, it is. First our technology director.
I know they're very prevalent in the business world. I think you see a lot of them in the business world. And when we first proposed this idea, the foundation said with first graders. But these two young ladies came to foundation board meeting and actually sold the foundation. It's a partnership grant. The foundation has supplied half the money and Jeff's technology budget supplied the other half. So the foundation was very interested in partnering to do this. So it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, and that's good, and I'm happy to hear that you're already thinking of ways of, through mini grants or whatever.
Well, way to get them into classrooms where they'll be utilized, thirty-five hundred dollars, a lot of money.
That's right.
And if it's going to sit on the wall and not be used.
At some point it will be more affordable.
It'll also be more.
Come on, it's on the mileage for the, we take those extra meals for maintenance and building, you know, we get.
Sinking funds.
The sinking fund, can sinking fund be used for technology?
Steve, you were going to check that.
Is this considered a fixture? Is this considered a fixture? Isn't, well, again, if this is a slightly gray area, because I guess I have to see this, but it sounds to me like it's actually a board.
It is, it's a board that's up on the wall and then there's a projector. The projector projects via the computer up there. And then you can just go to the screen and you just touch everything, just like you would a mouse.
So is that a fixture? Is that a fixture that is on the wall or portion of the cost? Say it's two thousand dollars for the board and fifteen hundred for the projector. And maybe a portion of that cost could be deferred against that.
I can check into that. Yeah, I thought they, and I thought they changed the rules a little bit on those sinking funds to give us more flexibility on what we could spend on.
They actually haven't changed the rules, they just changed the approval process.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
They used to approve in advance what those are when they tell you yes or no. Now they've said, well, we don't have the staff to be able to do that. We're going to keep you the same rules, but we're not going to go through that approval process. So now what the attorneys have been doing is putting together a list. They basically said they'll approve everything they've approved in the past. So now, now there's some attorney firms trying to put together kind of a total list of those types of things so that there's kind of index of what is all going to be.
Put smart board.
I would like to look into it.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like it's been a great addition, you know, to those classrooms. And we already, we said previously that other teachers, once they have the opportunity to see them in action, would be interested, so.
And the other kind of side note is we have two teachers who are collaborating with each other, talking about new ways that they can use this technology. Oh, look what I tried. So they are really enhancing each other with all different kinds of ways to use it. And their classrooms happen to be right across the hall from each other. So they really are able to interact and talk and it's, it's just been very, very, very interesting.
Yeah, keep, keep us informed. I, I'd like to share the fact that, I think we should at every meeting, if we have an opportunity to go into any classrooms or observe what's going on in the district, I think it's, it's really an opportunity and a proper place for us to share that information at the board table. And I had the opportunity last week to go to the zoo, two classes from Raya. We're doing the big zoo lesson with Pat Van Remen and Lisa Garcia. And I spent the afternoon there on Thursday and had a chance to, you know, walk with the kids and see what they were doing and also talk to some parents and spend a fair amount of time with Lisa, having her explain what they were doing. And it's, it's very engaging. The, the students, they're very tired at the end of the day, they've been very engaged. It's a week-long experience, but the feedback is just positive, positive, positive from everyone who's participated. And I want to commend both, both Pat and Lisa for what they've done with this. And I know other teachers in the districts have done this also, but they have to go through training in order to participate in this. And the big zoo lesson itself at Parter Park Zoo, talking to the director there, is booked by classrooms from around mid-Michigan area. And it's becoming more and more difficult for, for classes to actually get in there and participate in the big zoo lesson. And Margaret Holzschlag was instrumental in helping to develop this, this particular program. And I want to give her some kudos for, with her work with the Department of Education in putting this big lesson together. And it's not only impacting the students here in Hazlitt in a very positive way, but students from around the state in a very positive way.
You know, the, the big lesson was a, was seeded by the Hazlitt Public Schools Foundation many, many years ago. When Margaret was teaching here, she had this idea to do a lesson. And at that time it was the historical museum. And the foundation provided the seed money for that. And of course, it's taken off now, it's a state program. Just so you know, all of our fifth grades do either the big nature lesson or the big zoo lesson. This is what we substituted for winter camp. And so we have other classrooms that do, oh, Meridian Village, some second grade teachers do the big Meridian Village lesson. And we have fourth grades that go to the historical museum. But all of our fifth grades participate in a week-long big lesson. And, and Margaret facilitates and helps prepare teachers for that.
And Margaret was recognized and received the Crystal Apple Award at Michigan State University in large part for her work on the, on the big lesson.
I'd just like to follow up on something that Mike had already mentioned. And that's talking about the, just the epic production of Fiddler on. It was exceptional. And you sit here and you watch these fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old young adults. And the quality of the production leaves you speechless. From the set design to the dialogue, to the singing skills, to the acting abilities of these young adults. It is, it is, what an immense pleasure it was. And the hard work that Eric and Samara put into it. And the dedication of these, these kids putting in twenty-five, thirty hours a week was nothing short of stunning. And I don't know if Brian's back there, but my question becomes, when is a DVD available? And I will shamelessly plug this for those that were not available in the, in the community to illness or lack of tickets. You're missing one heck of a production. And we're blessed to have such talented and dedicated teachers and students. And the sound in the orchestra was seemingly made the paper. An enjoyable, wonderful experience.
Yeah, as Mike said, every, every year they, you know, they maintain this high level of performance year after year after year. And, you know, I, I attend, you know, performances at the Wharton Center. And I'm, I shouldn't be amazed anymore to go to our schools' productions and they rank professionally very, very high and match very well with. and they rank professionally very, very high and match very well with professional productions that, that I've had the privilege to see at the Wharton Center. So our, our kids and our staff do an excellent job and commend them for all their work.
I think just simple things like the set design is a very simple type of a set design. It was extremely effective and really attractive and fit perfectly. And, um, just things like that that they do that are just really, I think, special and unique and something to be very proud of as a community.
The engineering, the sounds, the lighting, I mean.
And we're still doing the Thursday night thing with the senior citizens, aren't we bringing?
It was Tuesday.
Oh, was Wednesday night?
I thought it was Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Ah, okay, all right.
Well, um, just, we should, probably should give Pat Hefner credit for much of the sound. And, um, does he do the set too, Mike?
He does. He helps with that.
He, he's the auditorium director.
Yeah.
And he's really your behind the scenes guy. You don't see him much, but during the play, he spends untold hours.
I know last year during intermission, I went up there to see some of the equipment that they had. And, um, you know, he was kind of surprised to see anybody come in, but he was really happy to show off the mix that they had. I was just amazed at the, um, you know, the technology that they use and way beyond anything I would have imagined.
Yeah, it's a program that, uh, and Eric would attest to it as well, that has really taken off in the last couple of years. And he's got a number of kids involved. If you've ever had an opportunity to go behind the scenes when they're putting on one of those performances, it is incredible because there are probably fifteen kids behind the stage, uh, moving sets in and out and the lighting and all the other things that go with it. It's very, very complicated. But they pull, they pull it together. It really is an exciting show, always.
There's great things going on all the time and I think it's, this is a good place to, to talk about it. Thank you.
Can I raise another one of those? This has gone, um, unnoticed at least by me until very recently. And Mike, I wanted to thank you for the science olympiad.
Signs.
Signs that are now, um.
There's two, isn't there? There's at least, there's two.
There's two, yeah.
Well, I'd like to take credit for it. I put Mike, put Mike Joseph on that prior to him leaving. And, um, yeah, they're, they're prominent now, so, you know, where they belong.
Well, I was real proud of that team when they came in here and, uh, just really pleased to see those signs up.
Can I also say?
You bet.
I might as well, as long as everybody else is going. I had an opportunity to go over and see Judy Tagreeney at Raya. And she took me on a tour and, uh, uh, the superintendent came along and just wonderful, wonderful classrooms. I saw Tom Zira's class. They were doing magnets when we went in there and talked about science. And these kids were just having a great time. And it's so interactive. I mean, they're talking with each other and doing different things. And not everybody's doing the exact same thing, but it's just, it's just so free and open for them to kind of try and do things. And I really admired that and he promoted it. And I also went to Lisa Garcia. Her class was in the computer and technology room when I went in there. And I visited so many classrooms. I was just so impressed with the teachers. They welcomed us to come in. I could go on and on about Murphy, but I'm there all the time. So kudos to Diane and her staff. I'm in Marilyn Hamilton's class a lot and she's just doing great things with those second graders. So I can't say enough about our teachers and I really get a, I, there's a lot of enjoyment going to these classrooms. So I'm gonna continue to go. So welcome us as we come in.
Great. And I have one other thing to add. Sharon and I made a visitation to ESL this past.
Oh, yes, we did.
And I'm gonna let Sharon tell, talk about it. We had a great visit. Go ahead, Sharon. You've got it spoken.
Well, uh, I have spoken, I've spoken all evening. Um, Joe Piment, uh, is in charge of our ESL program and that's an adult education program. And the students there are more primarily international students, uh, attending, um, MSU. Always around this time of year, they have their Thanksgiving dinner. And Mike had never had the opportunity to go to the Thanksgiving dinner. So he and I went together last week Friday, Thursday, last week Thursday. And, um, it was just delightful. There was some American food, but mostly, uh, each of the students proudly brings a special dish that they make and, um, lay out a huge table, as large as the board table with, with a buffet. And the students, um, then sing and put on a program and, uh, it was, it was just very interesting. Probably what, um, tore at our hearts a little bit is we were able to go downstairs. We also, in addition to the international students, we have a childcare program affiliated with ESL. And we're able to have fifteen students in the morning and fifteen student, or fifteen little ones in the morning and fifteen in the afternoon. Um, Jean Minima, our kids connection director, also supervises that, that program. And those little ones were having their own little, um, semblance of a Thanksgiving feast downstairs. And it was very, very fun. There were, I think, only eight or nine children that morning. And I, I think they all were from a different country. They all spoke a different language. And, um, it was just, just really, really special. I know Mike would encourage any of you to, um, visit ESL because you, until you go to the Wesley Foundation on Harrison Road and see what's happening over there, you have no understanding for how important that piece of the program is to those internationals who come to learn our language. And, um, so it was, it was a very, uh, fun lunch hour, so to speak, but.
Thanks, Sharon. Now, I would just add that I've had the opportunity to, to visit the program, I believe it was last year. Actually spent time working in one of the classrooms. I was invited into the classroom and then as long as I was there, I was invited to participate. And had a chance to talk to a number of the students and they are so thankful for the opportunity to participate in that program. It means so much to them personally and also to their families. So it, it's a great service, uh, that they, they provide there to that program.
One of the teachers who works at ESL in the afternoon also works for us, contracts with us and works with our K twelve ESL students, tutors them, which is again, a federal mandate. We're required to provide, um, English as a second language for students who don't speak English. And she works, um, here in the mornings and then goes there in the afternoon.
If you haven't had the opportunity, it's, it's a great place to visit. Shall we move on? Uh, next thing we have are action items. We have three action items. First one is approval of the minutes from the November eighth meeting. Number two is an out of state field trip request from Meridian High School for students to participate in the close up program in Washington DC. And the third one is a summer tax resolution. I would entertain a motion. Uh, well, first, maybe I'd like to discuss or pull any of those? I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, announcements, the, our next board meeting will be held on December thirteenth here in the boardroom at seven o'clock. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.